February 11, 2020, Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cellphones and stand for the pledge?
........................................................................... Before we begin our proceedings tonight, I'd like to take a moment to honor the life and work of Jeffrey Herkenroter, who passed away unexpectedly over this weekend. Mr. Herkenroter has been a beloved faculty member here in Gilderlin for the last 22 years. He taught in six of our seven buildings, which I learned yesterday from his many colleagues gathered to remember him and think of him. Most recently, he's been at Westmere Elementary, Lynwood Elementary, and Gilderlin High School. Mr. Herkenroter was a masterful player of the bass and a wonderful teacher of all children who wish to learn how to play stringed instruments. He will be missed in ways that will reverberate for years. Mr. Herkenroter was also a bassist for 33 years in the Albany Symphony Orchestra. And ironically, just tonight, we were going to bring that honor to everyone's attention because at his retirement, the symphony published an entire page of tribute to him in the program. And it's included with our board materials today, but a couple of things just stood out. Jeff became a bass player because he was the tallest boy in fourth grade. So, and he initially didn't pursue music, but quickly found his love there, and it is really transformative in his life. And the quote at the end of the article in the Albany Symphony Program was this. He says, "I am grateful, honored, and proud of my many years of playing in the ASO and of the enormous and varied musical experiences given me and the audiences of the Capital Region. Hopefully, this will give some young musician the opportunity to embark on another 33-year career." And I know for sure he has given hundreds and hundreds of children the opportunity to embark on a joyful, many-year career in music. So if you would all join me now in a moment of silence while we remember Mr. Herkenroter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie. First on the agenda, we have election of vice president. We have two open board positions, and we have a vice president spot that's open. First, I just want to thank Tim Haran and Sean McGuire for their service to the board and district. And to go ahead, and I think we need to have a motion for the vice president position. Kelly, do you have a motion?
I would like to nominate Barbara.
One second. Any others? I think we have to vote by ballot.
Glory, I think one of us has.
Oh. Glory, did you make a nomination?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was seconding Barb.
Oh, okay. So I think Barb and Glory, you guys have to text your votes into Linda.
Who am I texting?
To Linda Livingston.
What number am I using?
Email it to?
What, by texting, what am I using? What number?
You can email it to, Gloria.
Is Barb on there too?
Can't we just talk? There's only one nomination. Can't we just say unanimous or whatever?
Any other nominations? Okay, so do we all vote for Barb taking the vice president position?
Yes.
Oh, you still need their texts? Okay.
There's five of us here, so.
Yeah, if you need the paperwork.
If Gloria and Barbara want to send an email, that'll close the loop.
I'm sending mine now. Did Linda get it?
Not yet.
Did you get it?
Not yet.
I did.
Okay. That's a long way to go.
Okay, so the motion passes.
Should I try sending it to?
You're all set, Barbara.
You're all set, Barbara. Thank you.
You're all set.
Oh, okay.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. We have one person signed up. Kim Blaseak?
(inaudible) parent of four children in the district. I'm here to talk about the playground again. I'm here again tonight to emphasize the importance of updating the playground equipment currently in use at all of our elementary schools. Our district mission is to inspire all students to be active lifelong learners, able to achieve their highest potential in a demanding and ever-changing global community. It is our job as a district to provide our students with the tools needed to not only help them achieve their highest potential, but provide them with the academic, physical, and emotional tools to do as such. By having a playground to climb, jump, swing, and crawl on, our students are able to reset their minds during the day to continue the learning process. They're able to forget about the stresses of the day and just be kids. In our district vision, it states that we are to provide for all a safe and welcoming environment where students, parents, and staff are joined in the pursuit of academic excellence and personal growth. Currently, our playgrounds are not deemed safe. All, I should say, not all of them are. What does this say to our students, parents, and staff who come to school and see sections of the playground in disrepair and finally removed without replacement? That's what's happening at Pine Bush. It does not give the impression of a welcoming environment, but one of indifference. Roughly 2,100 students currently use the playground during the school day. That's almost half of our current enrollment in the district, and that doesn't even include the many community members who utilize our playground after school, during the evening, and in the summer months. For something used so frequently, how is it not a district priority to not only maintain, but update and improve our playground equipment? Playground equipment replacement was included in the $10-plus million wishlist that was removed from the Capital Project last year. That list was not a wishlist for those of us that sat on that facility's committee. As for the playground portion, it was a wishlist item, but not for us. Our students, if you really go out and talk to them, wish for this. I've had conversations with so many students, the crazy lady on the playground, even middle and high school students, who start to get excited when you ask them what they'd want to see on the playgrounds. They want to be able to swing and spin and climb around. They want something that makes them feel like kids. For all the stress our students have, we owe them the chance to just be kids and provide them with safe and updated playgrounds. And I'd like to add, along with my statement, I've been going over the business practice minutes from the last few meetings, and there was one comment that was put in, I believe it was December 18. I apologize if this is incorrect, but it says that it came up that maybe, and I'm sorry, Neil. Assistant Superintendent Neil Sanders raised appropriating funds in the annual budget for the purpose of purchase of turf time at other facilities as an alternative to the installation of a turf field, relieving some of the cost burden to parents and booster clubs. How do you guys pick who gets to actually get the burden taken off? Because I'm going to tell you right now, you have five PTAs busting butts trying to raise tens of thousands of dollars so their kids can actually have updated playgrounds that are, at some schools, 35 years old. So this is my opinion only. This infuriates me because we're trying to, we have schools that are collecting shoes for playground equipment. We're trying to put on a gala. Other PTAs are doing t-shirts. They're also, even my daughter at the high school, they have to fundraise for the musical, and she says there's equipment, there's some equipment that just, you know not to touch it because it's not exactly safe, but we make it work. So how is it that this group comes forward, and this has been in the business practices meetings since October, and all of a sudden, that's a possible option? It's unacceptable. And you might want to talk to the other organizations of parents and booster clubs that are raising money for other things in the district before you even bring that up in a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaseak. Next on the agenda, we have a high school student representative.
(inaudible) second semester, (inaudible).
Matt, can you go right up to the mic for us? Thanks.
(inaudible) theme was all around the world. We had choirs from the high school, band and orchestra from the high school, select choir, and select band from the middle school. Student government last Thursday hosted a town hall with the high school principal, Mr. Biscatelli, and assistant principal, talking about school concerns and things about the spirit rally and just feedback on the school. Talked about heating and cooling and part of the Capital Project, bathroom sicknesses, and the quiet cafe. There was a unified bowling match today, and there is a match on Thursday. You are all invited to attend any of the matches. The high school musical that is presented by the music department is Chicago, and that is March 12 through the 15. Thursday at 7:00 p.m., Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just make a comment? I went to the bowling today, the unified bowling, and it was wonderful. There were so many kids who are participating, including Matt, whose red shirt is kind of hanging out underneath, and he did great. And there are lots of people there, parents and friends cheering these kids on, and it's wonderful. There'll be another one on Thursday, as he said, at 4:15 at Town and Country. And even bowling isn't really a spectator sport, but just to go for a while and see what the kids are doing and see how much fun they're having all together, it's wonderful. And if you can go, I urge you to. There's another one Thursday, but Wednesday after vacation, I think, is, yeah, at Town and Country at 4:15. So, and there are more than 40 kids involved. A lot of Gilderlin kids are involved, so.
Thank you, Matt. Next on the agenda, we have consent items. This includes the minutes from the January 28 board meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action textbooks, and the financials ending January 30, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Ben?
(inaudible).
Second, Barb?
(inaudible).
Any questions? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did Gloria vote too? Damian?
Aye.
She said aye.
The pass is 7-0. Next, under information, Damian?
Thank you. Well, my first item was the recognition of Jeff Herkenroter. So the write-up from the Albany Symphony is included with my update, and that's there for your reference as well. My next item, we have a number of student recognitions from our art department, and I'd like to start with extending congratulations to Gilderlin High School senior Tracy Way, who has been awarded a Gold Key and a Silver Key for her work submitted to this year's prestigious Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Students receiving Gold Keys, Silver Keys, Honorable Mentions, or American Voices and Visions nominations are celebrated within their communities through local exhibitions and ceremonies. Gold Key works are then judged nationally by an impressive panel of creative industry experts to receive national medals, including Gold Medals, Silver Medals, American Voices and Vision Medals, Gold Medal and Silver with Distinction, portfolio medals, and special achievement awards. National medalists are recognized and part of the national ceremony at Carnegie Hall in New York City. Additionally, we want to extend congratulations to the following students who had their work selected for the 2020 Art in Three Dimensions exhibit. Over 200 entries were submitted for jury from over 20 schools in the Capital Region. Our students who have been awarded are Katerina Cooper of grade 12, Noah Manzella, grade 11, Victoria Hollenbach, grade 12, Jessica Cotton, grade 12, Willow Novak, grade 10, Isabella Gito, grade 10, John Josie, grade 10, Grace Powers of grade 10, Lauren Avellino, grade 9, Regan Rafferty, grade 9, and Jenna Barbato of grade 9. So congratulations to all of our student artists.
Thank you, Damian. Next, superintendent information, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you. As you know, each of our seven buildings has a building cabinet that is the shared decision-making body for each of our seven schools. And at the beginning of each year, each cabinet will establish some goals for the year, things that they're going to be working on. So what we have done this week is to provide the board with some information on how that work has been going from the beginning of the year until roughly the midpoint of the year. So you have in your materials kind of a brief summary from each of the seven buildings on the things that they're working on. I didn't intend to read through all of them. We'd be here for quite some time, but if there are questions that I can answer, I'll try, and if not, I have many in the back of the room who I'm sure would be happy to help.
When is the end of the year? So the last column, there's a status, the end of the year?
We'll report again in June, so you have a sense of their work. But as you can see, there are some themes running through all of the buildings around diversity and inclusion and climate and culture within the building. So they're loosely woven together, but they all have their own unique approach to it, and that's really what shared decision-making is all about, to get voices from across our stakeholder groups. So stay tuned for June, and we'll give you some more information on that. My next item is really just a reminder, many of you were at the event on June 30 on the Forum on Sustainability of Schools. This was held over in Green Bush at Columbia High School, and the intent of the event was to raise awareness to those school districts who, year in and year out, get the lowest amount of state aid allowed under the law for one of those school districts. There were numerous elected officials who were at the event to learn more about not only how that state aid works, but also the impact that it potentially will have on our school districts long-term. So many of you around this table were able to attend, and we're very appreciative of that. Pat Fahy, who was there at that event, will be here at some point tonight, so we can perhaps ask some follow-up questions for her. But kudos to the organizers of the event. Jeff Simon, who's the superintendent in East Green Bush, took the lead, as well as many of the students, but it really was a team effort, and I thought it was very well done. And my last item tonight is just to let you know that the Gilderlin Chamber of Commerce is going to sponsor its annual State of the Town Forum at Skyloft, located in the upper level of Crossgate Mall. It's from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, March 3. I will be one of the speakers and use my time to talk a little bit about our budget, our capital improvement projects, school start time. Lots of others will be included in the event, including town supervisor Peter Barber, Albany County Executive Dan McCoy, Assembly Member Pat Fahy. I know that Congressman Paul Tonko and Senator George Amador have been invited. I'm not sure if they will be able to attend, but this is an interesting event where you can get from community leaders firsthand what's going on in our community. So if you're able to attend, please do.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, board present information. The first item is the Capital Region BOCES Annual Meeting. So the annual meeting of the Cap Region BOCES is scheduled for Wednesday, April 1, 2020. Reservations to attend this are due by noon on Friday, March 20. And if any board members interested, please let Linda Livingston know. And also, the special board meeting that takes place Wednesday, April 22, 2020, 8:00 a.m. is a date selected to vote on the 2020-2021 BOCES budget and election.
It's not easy to say.
No. So make sure you put that on your calendar, that 8:00 a.m. vote that we meet in the district office.
What was the date again?
April 22 to Wednesday. Next, the United States Census. We've been asked to spread the word about the importance of the 2020 census and to help ensure that our students, educators, and community members receive the resources they need. So from the Census Bureau, census data is used to determine how many representatives each state has in Congress and inform the redrawing of the congressional district boundaries. The once-a-decade population count serves as a basis for distributing federal assistance to schools and educational institutions, including Title I aid, the National School Lunch Program, and the special education grants to states. So NISBA is encouraging us to talk about the census. The census has significant implications for public schools, the data to help determine how billions of federal education dollars are distributed, since funding formulas rely heavily on population and poverty levels. And if you attended the sustainability forum, you probably saw that very nicely laid out for us. Next, Board of Education workshop goals. After we met, Dr. Wiles wrote up the goals that we discussed at the end of that meeting, and now we have to decide what to do next. Any suggestions? I was thinking that we first go through the goals that we've gotten from all of the buildings and see how they maybe line up with the goals that we came up with last couple of weeks ago, and use that as a working document as we work on the budget. And then, at the end of the year, just like they have at the column, to reassess their goals and their progress, we do the same? We meet in June to do that? Now, if you have other ideas about what to do with the goals or what you'd like to do, just let me know so we can add it to the agenda.
(inaudible). I'm wondering if, you know, first thing we should do is, since we adopted these kind of as things we want to work on, is kind of figure out where we're at now, what's currently being done, get that, you know, clearly stated, and then we could talk about next steps so that we could take each goal separately and say, okay, where are we at, what's in place now, and then where do we need to go, so that we could kind of develop a continuum of motion forward.
So what was your suggestion, Gloria? I missed the first part. You?
I was saying it might be a good idea to take each individual goal separately and say, where are we at? Kind of do a status. Where are we at? What's in place now? Because these are things that we've been working on as a district, but we're kind of like focusing now down to these five. But we could kind of look at where we're at now, what's been accomplished this year or during the year, what's planned, and then make a plan for, an action plan for next year, where do we want to be, or what's the next step after that? So we have like a continuum moving us forward in each goal.
So you want to do that now or in June?
No, no, I don't think we can do that now, but I think between now and June, we need to gather the information.
Right.
Where we're at at each, you know, what's being done now, so that we can make some recommendations as to what the next step might be.
Do we officially adopt these as our goals, or are they still in draft form?
Well, my thought in bringing them out tonight was to give the community an opportunity to comment on them, see them, things like that, you know? I mean, there's definitely things missing from this list that might be important to members of our community, you know, mental health, things like that. And so, you know, I don't know that they're adopted yet.
While they're still in draft form, to get input from the rest of the stakeholders and then officially adopt it at some point, and then go with where we're at and where we're going.
Okay, so they're on the agenda, so the public, the community can read the goals of the district, and also, the goals of the buildings are also in the agenda. So it might be a good idea if people want to have input to read through those goals first and see if there are any common kind of themes that stand out, or like Ben said, if there's anything missing that you think should be added, we'd gladly take input.
Seema?
Yep.
Would you want to read the five that we have there, just to give people a head start?
Sure, I'll read them. All right, so we have five goals. The first one is to advance learning for all students with a particular focus on closing the achievement gap for those who are economically disadvantaged. The second one is develop a support, a culturally responsive workforce that reflects and honors the diversity of the Gilderlin Central School District student body. Number three, provide high-quality, research-based, job-embedded professional development for all faculty and staff. Number four, support and advance systems that protect the cybersecurity of district network and the privacy of faculty, staff, and student data. And the last one, support the maintenance and improvement of district facilities to provide a safe, secure, future-ready learning and working environment for all who learn, work, and visit our schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we gladly take input for the goals that the board came up with, they're in draft form, and the goals that were listed here from the buildings.
And in the meantime, we can begin gathering information about the work that's being done on this, so that we're not waiting till we're finalized, because there's quite a bit going on around these five things, so we can start putting that together.
Next, we have the state budget update, and perfectly on time, we have Assembly Member Pat Fahy here. Welcome.
A couple of handouts, if that's appropriate. Good evening, and good to be back. Sorry, I'm a little later than I intended, but, okay, wow. I guarantee you, I rarely hear that, but I have good timing. I actually was kind of racing out here from another couple of events. It's, we often say March is the busiest time of year, and truthfully, in many ways, it's February because we have budget hearings going on at the same time. We have committee hearings at the committee meetings, as well as votes on the floor, as well as all the off-the-floor, and then we conference on the budget each night. So this is, what I'm passing out now is just a PowerPoint. In many ways, it's in draft because we're still making edits to it. But what we did this year is just try to get in, every year, myself and John McDonald join together, and we try to just do a briefing in one or two areas of the region to really give people a sense of where we are with the budget. And this year, we've done it earlier than ever to just give an overview of what the governor has proposed, because right now, again, we are working on the governor's proposal. And then by March 18, so mid-next month, the Assembly and right around that same time, the Senate will adopt their one-house budget resolution. So again, this is what is proposed, the governor's resolution, and then we will have a response to that, and then, of course, by March 31, or hopefully shortly thereafter, if not March 31, we've had a pretty good track record these last few years, we will have to adopt the overall budget. So I just want to remind people that this is really what is proposed. So I just want to remind people that this is, this is really what is proposed. And we do somewhat of a dance each year. Let me start with the funding, which I know is of real interest. I'm giving out the entire PowerPoint that we have. And by the way, we did the briefing in Albany, so you'll see Albany referred to in a few areas here, because the budget briefing was done in, at the Public Library in Albany on Saturday. We may be doing one, hopefully scheduling one elsewhere in the region in the next month. But you will, you will see that referenced. Anyway, it's helpful, and the reason I brought it today is to kind of put it in context of where we are at. And I have to say, this is, I'm entering my eighth year in the Assembly, which is rather hard to believe. This is the start of my eighth year, and in the previous years, we have had the luxury, if you will, for lack of a better term, we've had multi-billion-dollar bank settlements. Now, those were bank settlements as a result of a really devastating housing crisis that put the entire country into a recession in 2010. But as a result of some of those suits and related lawsuits, we have had multiple billions of dollars. This year, that is in the hundreds of millions and much less. And for the first time since I've been elected, we have what is listed as a $6.1 billion shortfall. It is all in Medicaid, it is all in health. But often, education, you've often heard me say, really dominates the budget, and it is one where most members, the K-12 part of the education budget really dominates. The conversation dominates where members really have paid attention. This year, it's really, healthcare is really driving a lot of the conversation. So while there is thousands of issues in between, pick, pick your favorite issue. Childcare, roads and bridges, pick, pick your issue. Public transit, anything. But the two issues really dominating are healthcare and education. So this year, the governor's proposal, just to try to simplify this as much as possible, he is calling for a 3% increase in the, essentially, the healthcare budget, really in the Medicaid budget in this case, and then 3% in the education budget, and I'll get back to that in a moment. And then everything else, all the state operating funds, everything else, in general, is being held to under 2%. So you'll see other bigger numbers here. Certainly, the capital side, capital investments are larger, and we are still holding with billions of dollars in infrastructure investments. You saw us just open up Exit 3 on the Northway to provide that access to the airport that had been talked about for decades. So the capital side of the budget, you're also seeing a brand-new garage there. All of that is bonded, so it's a little, I don't want to say the word "easy," but it's a little, we're certainly continuing to make some serious upstate infrastructure investments. It is the operating side of the budget that is held at this 3% and 3%. So the governor, so back to education. While the regions, the Board of Regents have called for, recommended an increase of over $2 billion, the governor's proposal is the, what's it, 826? I have to look at my sheet, 826 or 926?
826.
Right? Eight?
Eight.
Eight twenty-six. Thank you. I feel like I should memorize this at this point, but it's not quite memorized. So the governor is proposing the 826 million primarily in foundation aid dollars, and of course, this year, he's also proposing to put all the expense-based aids in there. Generally, and I can only tell you what we've done in the past, not that the past is always the perfect predictor, but generally, the Assembly has come back with the highest number in terms of going beyond what the governor has proposed. In recent years, we have not achieved what the Regents have proposed. So there is a lot of support, there is still tremendous need, because the whole idea, while the property tax cap was passed before I was elected, that passed in 2011, the whole idea of having the 2% property tax cap is that we would try to relieve the burden on the property taxpayers and pick up more of that burden at the state level. And so I am very proud to think that we have increased state funding for education, I've lost track, but it's well over $7 billion just in the last few years. Certainly, Gilderlin has, in the last couple of years, has not benefited as much by those increases as some, as other parts of the district, other, many others of the 700. Certainly, Albany has done better as a very high-need school district. That said, since, we were at a forum a couple of weeks ago, thank you, Maria, the forum in East Green Bush, to talk about this, and a number of school districts that were there did well once we restored the gap elimination funds, the GEA funds. And since then, you've been somewhat flatlined, especially this year. So I actually asked our Ways and Means folks to give me a number, and in just the last five years or so, you have gone up over 28% in funding, which I was surprised that it was that high. But of course, a lot of that was a restoration, a restoration of where you had been cut after the last recession, those GEA funds. So I know that doesn't give much solace this year, because you have such a, at this point, key increases is very small. Or is it a reduction? Sorry, I should have looked at the chart right before I got here. It's a small...
Well, it's about 72,000 a foundation, but we're down overall because we have less building aid.
You have less, you have less expense-based aids, right. So thank you for clarifying that for me. So, right, so you've, you've inched up a little in terms of what the governor is proposing. And I, again, so far, we have a good track record of going well beyond what the governor has proposed. There is continued and tremendous momentum again this year to make sure that we are funding education, and I almost feel we're somewhat obligated, if you will, because we have now made the property tax cap a permanent one, and there was a lot of support for that. But the state, I do think, has to step in where appropriate. With regard to the expense-based aid, all the pieces that the governor has proposed to put in to the overall formula, from the members that I've talked to, including the committee chairs in the Senate and in the Assembly, I do not see a lot of traction for that proposal. And, but I encourage you through your school boards, through your administrators, associations, through the superintendent associations, just because I'm saying there's not a lot of support for that, please keep the pressure on, please keep raising your concerns, and I commend the superintendent for being out there and being very vocal on this issue, because, because a lot of this, as you know, happens the last few days, and the numbers are not finalized. So keep the pressure on us. That's, so that's, I know you've had the growth in English as a new language, the ENL students, and I know that that's another area that is driving up your costs, which is a good thing, right? We've had some tremendous diversity increases throughout the Capital Region, and that's a great thing, but in the short term, in the short term, those, those are often high-need students to serve, and so we do need to keep those programs well-funded. Happy to work with you to make sure that you are getting more of that. A number of years ago, when, before we stopped the flow of most refugees into this country, but when Albany opened up their refugee center, their USCRI Center about 10 years ago, we were getting 400-plus families in each year through the refugee center. Many of those were in the Albany School District, so we had a huge spike in students with some serious ESL needs. We were able to address that in some parts of the formula, and that helped Albany in the short term. That has leveled off a little bit in Albany, but I know you're still continuing to see those numbers really increase. So that might be another area that can be tweaked in the formula, and there continues to be serious support throughout the state to make sure that we are serving the ENL students appropriately. And then the disability, I know you also have a high number of students with special needs, and we need to make sure we're serving them. That cost has not, has not gone, has not gone down. The, to his credit, the governor has proposed an increase in after-school programs. I'm not sure if you're one of the grantees, you don't get, yeah, okay, you're not getting that. The, you know, the number is, I think, the last time I checked, it was about a million, a million students not being served in after-school programs. So that's a continuing challenge across the state, and the more working parents we have, the more need there is. So maybe that's another area that we can talk about, certainly expanding pre-K. I know you haven't, that's not one that's going to help you either. But hopefully, we will get there, because we are also adding in, we seem to be getting increasing support for pre-K transportation. For years, we've had increases in pre-K funding without the transportation, which I know is keeping some districts from, from even adopting it. Let's see, there's community schools, it looks like will increase in funding, but that is usually with, part of that is within the foundation aid formula. Let's see, I think that's about it. Any questions on the education piece of this? Again, we're at 3% now. I am really hopeful we will go beyond that. There, it always, always the area of the budget, while certain members may focus on transit, or on highways, or potholes, or childcare, or whatever, and there's many, many needs throughout the budget, we tried to give a flavor of it in this, I will say where the one area that gets the most focus across the board is this area. So I am optimistic. How much that moves the needle for you remains to be seen, but in the past years, we have, we have been able to go at that and raise it a little bit. I'm, I know that's a lot to throw at you, and there's a lot, we tried to get, you know, I think the budget is already 1,000 pages, it ends up a couple of thousand pages. We tried to summarize it in about 20 PowerPoint slides, but it does help put some of this in context, and happy to, happy to take any questions, any concerns, or anything as we go forward.
Hi. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
And this may have been answered and either by you, or may have been taken care of, but is the 2%, is that going to be a permanent 2%? Or is it still tied to the Consumer Price Index?
It is, I, that's a really good question, thank you. It is permanent now, that was adopted last year. However, it is still tied to the CPI. There are some efforts to make sure that, there are some exemptions to that as state and local governments have, sorry, as local governments have, and you have not had.
Yeah.
So there's been some real unfairness to that. The superintendent and I have had multiple conversations, and I've encouraged BOCs, I've encouraged all the superintendents to really simplify the asks, and let's go, let's go back at this. We've adopted a few proposals on that each year. We tend to lose on that in the, in the final outcome of the budget.
Yeah, I guess I'm more concerned that the, it be 2% and not the CPI, because it makes it harder to plan our budget. If we had the 2%, it's, it's an easier number.
Yes, which, which is how, my understanding is how they've done it in Massachusetts, the 2.5% there, where it actually is 2.5, and I think that really tripped up a lot of districts in the first few years of this, especially when it was closer to 1%, and I think a year or two ago, when it was under 1%. So that's, that has really tripped up, well, and localities, quite frankly. So the good news is, if, this may not provide much comfort to you, but the good news is at least we are funding education to the tune of billions and billions at the state level. The AIM funding, which is the aid to municipalities, we have not increased that by one dime since I've been in the, in the legislature. While we've been able to get Albany some additional funds, the AIM money has not moved one nickel. So for them, it is, it has been a hard 2% or less, depending on the CPI. But at least with education, we have been able to put in those billions of dollars. And again, this year, we are, we're competing in a way with a lot of areas of the budget, given the shortfall.
Okay, I just, I hope you will recognize our concern, that 2% would be, you know, not that it has to be more, but it has to be something that we can count on, and not the 1.8 or 0.89 or whatever it's been.
Agreed. We, in the Assembly, have not conferenced the education part of the budget yet. If there's a chance it's tomorrow, it's got to be. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's tomorrow, if not, but that, that will come up, and I will certainly raise it, and...
Thank you.
And I know the BOCs, a whole host of others have been raising it. So we, we plan to go back at it, and especially this year, if the money is not going to be as significant. As you know, a number of education groups are out there asking for 4 billion. So, you know, I'm just trying to hope, I'm just hoping we can get as close to the 2 billion, but there are a number of advocates asking to go more. I'm just, I'm just trying to go off what we've done in the past, so I don't, I don't want to sit here and tell you we're going to reach for 4 billion if, if we haven't reached it in the past. I'm just trying to give as realistic a picture as, I, I don't believe in overpromising. So in the past, we've really tried to get as close to the Regents' recommendation as possible, and I don't know where the hands were, so I, either way.
As far as the revenue proposed highlights on here, that's like, this is not included in the governor's proposal? Can you talk a little bit about like what we could do to get more money specifically? Like not stop, stop fighting for the little money that we have, but just overall, try to get more, and specifically, the, on here, they mention the millionaire income tax. Is that something that's getting traction, or is that something that's...
Last year, again, I'm just going to try to tell you where we've been in previous years on that. Last year, the Assembly did adopt a millionaire tax hit, if you will, I forget all the details of it.
Bracket.
And we did a PETA, the one that would tax the second homes, in, it was only in New York City, but it was the, often what are second homes or condos there, we, we did pass a tax on those that were over 5 million or more, again, to try to raise some monies. In the end, both of those fell out of the budget. So we did not, so while we adopted them in the Assembly one-house bill, they did not prevail in the end. And not sure where this year, there's a lot of momentum again this year, but I never try to overpromise. It's getting a lot of attention. NICE and a whole host of others are really pushing that we adopt some of these measures. Certainly, you hear it from presidential candidates, right? On a national level, I should say. So it's getting more and more attention, especially because we have a healthy economy, we have one, we have the healthiest upstate economy here in the Capital Region, and yet there is still a real wealth gap between low-wage earners and high-wage earners. So it's, it's getting huge traction, and it is something we've done in the past in the Assembly, but it has met with resistance. So I think, I think you will see us adopt some of those again this year. There is some momentum in the Senate to do that, but I also understand, and trying to keep a ear to the ground on a host of areas, something like the PETA, the PETA, sorry, I never took French. But that tax, I would have bet $100 last year that that was going in, and that would have prevailed, because it just, it was really hurting, it wasn't even hurting New York taxpayers, because often, the statistics show that those who own the high-wealth condos and townhouses, or second homes in New York City, are often people from out of state, if not out of the country. And so it really wasn't going to hurt the New York taxpayer. So I, I would have, if I'd been here last year, right before then, I would have said that was going to be a slam dunk, and it was going to raise hundreds of millions, if not more, of dollars. But this year, New York City, I, as I understand it, is moving toward completely redoing their own property taxes, and so it's complicating our abilities to try to tax that at the state level. So that's a long way of explaining, I understand we're running into a few roadblocks again. That said, that said, I still think you're going to see the Assembly include a few of these. I think we're going to see some traction in the Senate. But I always prefer... But I always prefer, and maybe it doesn't make me a good messenger, but I always prefer to be the most sober one and not, you know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, we're going to raise this 4 billion overnight and, you know, everybody's going to have a big fall because I, I've just, I've just seen too many years, really, last year I would have said a shoo-in and we didn't do it. So there's pushback in many areas on these things and especially if New York City is saying, you know, saying something to the effect that they've got their own proposals. But I am still hopeful that we'll, we'll make some inroads on that, Kelly. Sure, yeah, we'll try.
I just have a question. What do you suggest the best way our community can advocate for our district? Because I feel like we are always fighting, you know, for this little piece of pie with high-needs schools who obviously also need the funding, to just get a bigger pie.
Well, that's part of it, is to roll the pie. And we have, you know, I think it was within record time that, remember, we started, we started behind, right? After the recession, when there was the multi-billion dollar cut made with the GEA. We started from behind after the recession, right? So thankfully, we had tremendous success. You guys had a huge, you had almost, I think, a $2 million bump in a couple of years with, but it was a restoration, right?
Took our money and then they gave it back, so it was-
Right, 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 well, yes, right, yeah. But we made record time with restoring that and now we've put in the billions since then. But you're right, you are not, a lot of that has gone to the higher wealth districts. And I'm just going to be perfectly honest, we've done well in Albany. There is a, we are told, and you can read the same literature I read, there is a $40 million shortfall in the city of Rochester, not the city, sorry, the school district of Rochester. $40 million and because they don't pass their own budgets, they, as it is, they're not taxed as heavily there as we are in Albany or in the surrounding towns. So it's those kind of, Yonkers a year ago was tens of millions as well. So that hurts, I'm not saying they are going, I know they're putting it into some type of receivership, so I'm not saying they're going to get $40 million come April 1st. I don't, I don't think they are. But I know they will be getting something along with some type of receivership or oversight body. But those are the kind of, you know, those are the kind of extenuating circumstances that are putting real pressure on this, on this budget. So how much you'll do if we, you know, if we see a billion dollars more, I'm not sure how much that would affect, that would affect the formula. In the past, I've had a little bit of success. Last year, Voorisville got hit and I had a little success there with getting some bullet aid. When the formula, you know, the formula can only fix so many things. So we've had some success with getting some bullet aid in a couple of areas. We had a huge home run in Voorisville with getting some bullet aid there. I will certainly be working with you and that of the formulas continues not to show better outcomes for Gilderland. It's tough, but in the meantime, oh, you asked the advocacy, I can never emphasize it enough, you have to work with your associations. I just, it is so important, especially this year, when the noise level is, is serious competition between health and education and then the hundreds of things in between, thousands of things, as well as higher ed is really getting a lot of attention this year. A lot of momentum to try to fix the TAP, the TAP aid that has been, has really been stuck for a number of years. The primary rate on that has been stuck for years. So a lot of competition this year, more than others, and not having a little bit of a cushion through the settlement. But your administrators, your school boards, associations use them. I think BOCs has done a very good job of really organizing itself and really trying to hone in on a couple of these things that would help to at least make the tax cap, at least they make that more workable if we were able to remove some of the pilot payments and some of your capital expenses. So I think BOCs has had some real success because they've done a very good job of organizing. So I also recommend working with them. Sorry, I, you know, I wondered if it was better to wait till afterwards in hopes that we'd have some better news or come now when the news is still very much in limbo. Sorry, it's not better than we'd like at this point. It is that time of year where it's pretty sober and it, but it is the starting point. That's all I can tell you. And again, if past is any predictor, we often do significantly better. And the momentum is there again this year, it's just, there is more competition.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to just step in and forgive me if I'm heading back out. We've had long days. But I, you know, I am a call away and the superintendent does have me on speed dial. So if there is anything, I really am happy to continue to keep you posted and I hope we'll be able to deliver the lead, if I can do in the future. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
So next on the agenda, we have Board of Ed Policy Review. There are a list of policies here, A through K, for the first read. Barb, is there anything that we should be particularly looking out for or not really? Oh, I think she shut her-
Barbara, you're muted.
No, the policies are there just for review.
Okay, thank you. Last, Capital Region BOCs Board nominations. The BOCs Board is looking to fill four seats that are open for election on April 22nd, 2020. The one three-year term position is open and has been typically held by an Albany County resident. The seat is currently held by Mr. John Phelan, a Gilderland resident, who's interested in a nomination for the open seat. Mr. Phelan was first elected to the BOCs Board in 1994. Nominations for the open seats are due at least 30 days prior to the date of the election, which for this year is March 17th, 2020. And I think we all read the letter of, from John Phelan, so.
He was a board member here for many years before and he's served us well also, so that should be an easy recommendation. Thank you.
Senator, I'd like to nominate Jack Phelan.
Do you have a second? Judy?
I'd like a second.
We got Judy, a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 7-0.
Aye.
Next, action items, School Business Management Action. Neil?
Thank you, Senator. First item this evening is a resolution to authorize a school bus and vehicle bond proposition for the May 19th, 2020 school budget vote and election. And just as a reminder for everybody, we would like to utilize $983,300 for the purchase of 466 passenger buses, 366 passenger buses with chains and 160 passenger bus with configurable wheelchair stations.
Can I have a motion to pass the resolution? Judy, second?
Omo.
Rebecca? Okay, any questions? I think we need a roll call vote for this, right, Linda? Okay.
Dr. Butterfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mr. Goze?
Yes.
Mrs. Person?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tollhill?
Yes.
Passes 7-0, thank you, Linda.
Next item is a resolution to approve Gilderland High School to serve as an emergency shelter site for the Skowhary Semple School District. We've had disagreements in the past, but we do periodically review them and update them so that everybody's agreement is up to date.
Can I have a motion to pass the sheltering agreement? Ben, second? Kelly, any questions? Pass, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0.
Yes.
Next item is a resolution to approve the agreement with Albany College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences to make available college and high school courses to students for college credit during the school year.
Can I have a motion to pass the agreement with ACP? Rebecca, second? Judy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0.
Next item is the service agreement, the provision of programs and services for students with disabilities, and that is with the Greenberg North Castle Union Free School District.
Can I have a motion to pass the agreement with Greenberg North Castle School District? Kelly?
Omo.
Second? Rebecca?
Omo.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Aye.
Next is a resolution to approve building commissioning services. The recommendation is to appoint Guth DeConzo Consulting Engineers for that purpose. There was a process that we went through. We invited six firms to propose, make a proposal. Three of the firms were selected for interviews, just connected with Cliff Noonie, who's here this evening, as well as our architectural and construction management firms. And on the basis of the interviews, as well as checking references and experience along with project philosophy and approach to price, it was recommended to award to Guth DeConzo a fixed fee of $116,500.
Can I have a motion to pass the commissioning services? Judy, second? Rebecca? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 7-0.
Finally this evening, we have a recommendation to approve budgetary transfer in the amount of $26,100, taking the money from employee benefits and putting it into tuition. And this is due to an increase in students attending charter schools.
Can I have a motion to pass the general fund transfer? Ben, can I have a second? Kelly? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0. Thank you, Neil. Next, Board President Action. We have adoption of the proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar. Last time, we had it up for first read. And can I have a motion to pass the school calendar for the next academic year?
Omo.
Barb, second?
Omo.
Gloria?
Get in there.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0. Next, Board Committee Reports. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We need a motion to pass a resolution for a quiet title action. Can I have a motion to approve the quiet title action? Ben? Second? Kelly?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ben Tenille? Okay, so passes 6-1. Next, Board Committee Reports. We'll start with Policy.
A policy, you have the results of our work and we'll be meeting in March. We'll do a poll.
Okay, thank you. Next, Audit? Right.
We haven't met since the last board meeting.
Okay, so since Rebecca's the only member on the Audit Committee and we normally have three, I think we need to have a couple more people volunteer to serve on Audit if they're available. Do you have a meeting scheduled next? Nothing?
I probably do.
We need to schedule one, but-
Need to have some committee members.
Lacking a couple board members, so once we have that, we will.
I have been subbing in periodically this year, so.
Do you want to take that role then?
I can do that.
Okay, so Ben and Judy? So we'll hear an update next time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Communications?
We have not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is March 6th.
And last, Business Practices?
We will be meeting on March 4th at 4:00 PM.
Public Comment Number Two. We have one signed up. Ms. Blazier?
Okay. Crazy parent. It's actually not a bad question. I had a question on your goals. I think I was just too slow. Your first goal, advanced learning for all students with a particular focus on closing the achievement gap for those who are economically disadvantaged. I agree because I think hasn't our number gone up, like, hasn't it tripled or something like that, where it went from something like 5% to almost, I want to say like 17% to 19%, something like that? So I do agree with that, but at the same time, I'm on the, I'm on NICE Ed's data reporting site and I would really also like to see students with special needs put in that group as well. Because we don't, not all of our students are even proficient in the testing, they are just barely passing, so I'd like them just not to fall by the wayside as well. Thank you.
No other public comment? Linda, okay, thank you. Last, Board Sharing Ideas and Issues.
I had an opportunity to go to a presentation last night at the middle school about our path curriculum in the elementary grades. You know, we had a comment, you know, months ago at this point about, you know, questions and maybe having a presentation like this. And I was glad to see that we did do that. You know, there were over 70 parents in attendance, you know, who came out for a presentation at 7 o'clock about math, you know, so this is clearly an important issue. I was able to speak with some of the parents after the meeting. So, you know, I think it was a great presentation. Damien was there and some of our math specialists from the elementary school. But I think questions remain and I'm hopeful that the district will continue working with parents on resolving their concerns.
Any other issues or comments? I just want to bring up that, so we are a seven-member board currently and the election is May. Until we previously discussed, now that we are officially down two members, what to do until the May election. And I think the idea out there was to stay at seven because of the time it would take to appoint someone, to ask the public, you know, who's interested and go through that process to appoint people. The amount of time that we have in going into budget season, I don't know if that would be the best use of our time. So I think that was what we discussed. If anybody else wants to add anything to the discussion? Okay, thank you.
Until the election.
Till the election. Then fill up all the spots.
Fill up all the spots, totally.
So vacancies are filled the day after the election. So it really isn't till May.
So I need a motion to adjourn? Judy, second? Rebecca, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 7-0. Passes 7-0, thank you.